Recording in progress. Good evening, it's Monday, October 7th, and this is a meeting of the Southborough Planning Board. The Planning Board is now in session. I want to start with two feel goods. First, thank you to the Planning Board, and especially Marnie knocking it out of the park, presenting a town meeting. And thank you to all the help everybody put in. Thank you so much. Everyone I talked to said, "Oh my God, Marnie did a great job presenting," so thank you so very much. And then Lisa did a wonderful drive to help the victims of the hurricane in North Carolina this weekend that she threw together in five seconds and was very, very positive. And would you like to speak to that, Lisa?
Thank you, Mimi. I would take every opportunity that I publicly have to acknowledge the tremendous magic that this town can create. So on Thursday of last week, we've been kind of trying to figure out if there was any way to do something to help those in North Carolina and Tennessee. And on Thursday morning, Teds of Fayetteville volunteered a truck and drivers to take any items that we could collect on Saturday down to North Carolina. We made a connection with the North Wilkesboro Speedway that would accept our items, and they gave us a list of the most requested items. So in two days' notice, we put it out to the town, and I -- it takes my breath away, literally, the hundreds of cars that pulled in to fill a 53-foot trailer. It's a tremendous feat. Towards the end, we were afraid that we had too much stuff to fill the trailer, so we started consolidating some things. And Mimi was the guru of packing, and--
I picked stuff up and I put it down.
But I just want to say how incredible it was, and how this town is just the most amazing place for all of us to live. The level of support that we could provide to those that had lost everything. So we filled the tractor-trailer. It left at 5:00. Doors shut right at 5:00 when we ended. Got down there just around 7:00 in the morning. The driver texted us some pictures of it going in. The track actually called me at 8:00, and the woman that was coordinating it cried. She said that no one -- we have the record, first, of being the furthest away of any donation that they got, and that they had a truck that had been waiting for just about a day and a half to go to the Western Mountains of North Carolina. And they were looking for specific items. Literally, they called the driver and said, "Get here," and they did a truck-to-truck unload. And that truck, by noon time, was then on the way to the Western Mountains. And I got an email on Sunday night that the items had already been dispersed. So again, I just, I want to thank this community. I want to thank everyone that just gave from their heart. You know, the DPW was just unbelievable. Obviously, Teds of Fayetteville has a huge kudos. They reached out to the towing community, and they had people sponsoring, different towing companies sponsoring pallets. You know, so Ted showed up Saturday morning with 12 pallets from BJ's all ready to get us started. So, and the town filled the rest. So again, from the bottom of my heart, I share the thanks from all of those that are going to be so touched by what this town did. And it's just breathtaking to me that -- I'll share one quick story, Mimi, and then I'll stop, because I could go on for hours. We had a young lady that showed up whose family was directly impacted. She lived there. She couldn't get back there. She so appreciated what was going on. She not only thought to bring items, she made a little goodie bag for the drivers of the truck with little snacks and everything else. So again, this is Southborough. This is Southborough at its best. And again, I will shout from the rooftops, you know, every chance I get to just let everybody know, "Thank you so much. You made such a difference." Everybody wants to do something, and Saturday, we gave everybody the opportunity to do that. So from the bottom of my heart, I thank everyone. Thank you, Mimi.
Thank you, Lisa. It's amazing how quickly you threw that together. So now, on to the agenda. The first item on the agenda is a discussion item, statement in support of the town planner. At the close of our last meeting on September 9th, a commenter called in and made some derogatory and slanderous statements about our town planner. And I just wanted to take this time to voice my full confidence and support in our town planner. The town planner is responsible for adhering to the planning department's rules and regulations and to guide proponents to comply with the zoning code, which is voted into law by the legislative body. And by doing so, she is serving the residents of this town. There have been numerous occasions when projects before the Planning Board, the proponents have made a point of telling the Planning Board how extremely helpful our town planner was to them, and how vital her assistance was in guiding them through the process. And my experience is then, when project proponents heed the guidance of town planner, their projects quickly gain approval. Many of the complaints voiced by the commenter on September 9th were based on ignorance of how town government works and the role of town planner. The complaints centered upon the Planning Board's outside peer review consultant, and that the town planner chose that consultant. That, the Planning Board has been using this peer review consultant for 18 years, and it's the Planning Board, not the town planner, that chooses the consultant. And there are numerous benefits to utilizing the same consultant for peer review. They're familiar with the town. They're familiar with what we're looking for as feedback. They're familiar with the town regulations and bylaws, which is advantageous to the project proponent, and the Planning Board, and the town residents. There was a suggestion by the commenter that the Planning Board should pick a different peer review consultant for every single project, which would add months to the review process without any benefit. There was also criticism of the peer review consultant of issue spotting, which is, that's exactly what we hired the peer review consultant to do, to look at the code, our regulations, and see where the two, in the plans, where they don't match. So it's unfortunate that we continue to have to hear things said about our town planner who works very, very hard, is very diligent, and does a fabulous job.
Thank you very much for your support. I appreciate that. It means a lot to me.
Anyone else have any comment?
I just want to add that Karina Quinn is an outstanding town planner. She brings multiple degrees to this role, and she's very diligent. And where we are all volunteers, she takes this job extraordinarily seriously. She helps guide our team when we have our own questions, and ensures that the law is processed and proceeded correctly. That particular speaker is a proponent before the board, and has made numerous comments on multiple occasions. And it's not in, it's disingenuous, and it's not the right thing to do. And I just want to say, we support our town planner wholeheartedly, and I couldn't do my job without you. Thank you, Karina.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
I'd just like to say, Karina, coming on this board and being a huge process person that I am, I have a kindred spirit in you, and you have always helped me to understand the processes since I've gotten on this board. And I am a much better Planning Board member because of you. And I think this town is more than well-served by Karina, and we should be thankful that we have someone looking out for our best interests as well as she does. So thank you.
Thank you. We all set with this? On to the next agenda item. 250 Turnpike Road, major site plan noise complaint. I don't know if you want to come up, Mr. Palmer?
Sure.
You can come right up to the big table if you want. Whatever, whatever's your preference.
John Palmer, 131 Parkerville. And, Mimi, I went out to you maybe a week ago after trying to work with the developer, trying to work with the town's noise complaint office about ongoing noise complaints coming from, or noise coming from the contractor's yard at 250 Turnpike Road at all hours of the night, well past the hours of operation. You know, this has continued for months and months and months all through the summer. Over the summertime, it was Diesel Direct, and the, and it was them starting up their daily operations at very early hours of the morning, whether it be, you know, 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the morning. That continued on a daily basis for months and months. By working with the developer, the developer canceled the tent, the contract with the, with Diesel Direct, and that addressed that matter. But then, you know, even days after that, you know, we continued to get hit with a lot of noise coming from the site, this time with floodlights, this time with, you know, a 10-ton dump truck and a heavy loader loading and dumping material back and forth on the, on the site. Come to learn that that's, I guess, the utility company that is doing work on maybe Route 9 or 495, but using the Beehive's contractor's yard as a staging area for one of those construction projects. And my simple question to the board is, is that a permitted use of the contractor's yard, and is it a permitted use of the contractor's yard after operating hours?
So they haven't built the contractor's yard yet. They have a permit for store, like boat and truck storage at that parking lot. And I was unaware that they had even started renting out those facilities, because one of the conditions required that they notify the board when operations were to commence. So we didn't hear. The first we heard that anyone was there was when we heard the complaint at the last Planning Board meeting about Diesel Direct. And there are hours of operation that, so is this happening outside of 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.?
Well, outside of 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., whether it be 11:00 at night, 1:00 at night, 3:00 in the morning. On top of that, you know, so there's trucks loading and unloading materials, sand, gravel. You get the noise of the 10-ton dump truck dumping those materials. You get the constant, you know, backing up of the loader and the trucks to load materials. You know, the trucks are even using, you know, egress out of the property and going right down, you know, Parkerville Road at, you know, 3:00 in the morning. And a 10-ton dump truck going down Parkerville is not quiet. So, you know, again, I only came to learn that, you know, perhaps it was the Beehive contracting with the utility company to use that as a staging area. And again, I question whether or not that's a permitted use, and if it's a permitted use, you know, after hours.
I don't think it's a permitted use. I don't, I don't think storage and-- Yeah. Yeah. Yes, sir.
Fred Harvey, 129 Parkerville Road. I think John summed it up very well. The biggest thing is when that, when that tailgate slams on the back of a dump truck, you, it'll wake up the dead. Maybe there's some positive information. I was contacted by Eversource today, and there was a representative called me and said that they are taking some steps to try to alleviate the sound of the dump trucks. So I don't know if that came through information through the Planning Board, Board of Health, or some other, some other source, but they said, he said that he's trying to do it, and he asked me if there's any other instances of, you know, excessive noise to contact him. And, but he did say this project will go to mid-November and possibly mid-December. And so that, the proof is, will be in the pudding. I'll see, I'll listen to see, you know, how often it is, and John certainly will too. But, you know, so I'm hoping that there's some, you know, positive moves coming through Eversource to try to alleviate the problem.
Where's the building inspector in all of this? Yeah.
Okay, so today, I had a discussion with the building inspector about the situation, and I had forwarded him John Palmer's email about the continuing noise concerns. And I received an email this afternoon from Chris Lund, the building commissioner. Should I read it? It's not very long.
Sure.
It says, and this is regarding to 250 Turnpike Road lot being used for staging and overnight operation for your gas line project. "Hi folks, I called Brian Charvell, 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 for Ferris Development, and I called John Palmer. I was able to speak to Brian, and I left a voicemail for Mr. Palmer. My understanding is Eversource took the opportunity of an open gate to use the perceived vacant lot while they were working on Route 9. The gate has been fixed to remain closed off-hours, and therefore, Eversource has no ability to use the lot. I further understand that Brian and Mr. Palmer have been dealing with each other directly on this, and that currently, there is no issue. I've copied everyone on in, so they can add any other insights. Thank you, everyone." So again, he had spoken to Mr. Attorney Charvell, and he did try to reach out to you, John, so he didn't have a chance to talk to you.
Does that jibe with what you're saying, Mr. Palmer?
I don't know. I guess it's a question for Brian, if there was some sort of an agreement made to let them use the contract, the parking lot as a staging area. It's been going on for, you know, a month now, so--
Right. But what I'm trying to understand is, you spoke with the building inspector today, is that correct?
I did not, no.
That was a voicemail.
No.
Oh, okay. So you have not had any discussion with the building inspector?
No.
Okay. Has any resident present here spoken to the building inspector about this?
I've put noise complaints in through the Board of Health. Thank you. And--
Okay, and so the question you're proposing to the board is whether or not we, this is part of allowed use from previous--
So a year--
--approval, or--
A year ago, we, you know, we were in front of this board, and the developer was here to get their special permit granted to use, to open up operations for the Beehive, including the use of the parking lot. And, you know, the use of the parking lot has gone well beyond what I ever expected. So, you know, I thought we were limiting the use of the parking lot to those hours of operation, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And, you know, the Beehive is clearly in violation of those hours of operation.
Well, thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members. I'm Brian Charvell, the Chief Operating Officer and General Counsel for Ferris Development Group, here on behalf of FG 250 Turnpike, which owns the property we're talking about. So as I informed Mr. Lund today, and as Mr. Palmer knows, the property owner has taken steps to mitigate this noise. The first thing is, the property owner, at its expense, evicted the tenant, Diesel Direct, that was conducting overnight operations on the property. That took 20 to 30 days' notice and all that to cause that to end. They're gone. They were the first offender. And then the second noise that Mr. Palmer shared with us was relating to the gas work in Route 9. And we've now made sure pursuant to the site plan decision that the gate is closing overnight on the requisite hours. So that ability of, whether it be the gas contractor or somebody else, to come and go at night is now prohibited.
But why was the gate open at all? If it was outside of hours, why would the gate be open?
It was only installed a couple of months ago, and the electronics weren't hooked up yet for it to be on a timer. But that was rectified last week. So a question I would ask if I was a Planning Board member is, when was their last noise problem at the site?
This evening. There's plenty of activity going on right now. I'm sure it will continue after, after 10 o'clock. So on my way here, the floodlights are on, the trucks were getting ready to lay out cones and, and, you know, load up their, their dump trucks. I'm sure that work's going to continue through the night.
So it sounds like they're actually trespassing on, on your client's property. So the police should be called, actually.
If they don't have permission to be there, no question.
Okay, so I'm gonna, what if I drive by there later? If I see them in there, I should call the cops, right?
I'll ask my client, but I don't think they have any permission to be there. And the gate is opening and closing on schedule.
Well, you sounded like you just said that you told them not to come do that. What is it? Do they have permission, or do they not have permission?
As far as I know, they do not.
This sounds a little ambiguous.
No, as far as I know, they do not. They do not have permission to be there. And keep in mind, I haven't read the noise bylaw through this lens, but construction work, especially utility work, is typically exempt. And so--
So the noise bylaw aside, the permit for major site plan approval has hours of operation, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and lights out at 8:00, only by motion sensors. And you, there are these huge, you know, 100-foot-tall lights on, on your site. And if they're, and if they're dumping dump trucks, there's piles of stuff in there. So you're saying that they just showed up on your lot and started using it as a staging area?
As far as I know, yes.
As far as you know?
Mm-hmm.
I don't understand what you mean by that. I mean, you're the, you just said you're the counsel and chief operating officer of this site. How could that happen, and you not know about it?
My client hasn't told me that they have permission to be there. And again, as of middle of last week, the gate's functioning on the requisite hours.
I just have to say, I mean, you have, you know, things in front of this board. This is not what you want us to be discussing, or deliberating, or even hearing--
I know.
--while you have open items in front of the Planning Board.
I know, and I've told my client that.
That's not a good look.
I know.
David's iPhone?
Yeah, that's David Ferris.
Okay.
Great. Greetings from Jamaica, guys. I hope you're having a good day back there in Massachusetts. A couple of quick items. I think, first of all, this is a great, great way to, frankly, in my view, start with the Planning Board, which is in the community, which is when the community raises an issue with us and brings to our attention something that's happening at our site, we immediately take action. We communicated with the Board of Health, both in writing and verbal meetings. Our liaison, Ariella Thornton, had those conversations related to Diesel Direct. We took swift action when we found out they were outside the operating hours, and we immediately sent them an eviction notice, case closed. Excellent way that Beehive responded to the community's concerns quickly and promptly. With regard to the lights and the noise on Parkerville Road, the same employee lives in direct proximity. We've taken videos, and we have those as backup. Ninety percent of the noise was occurring on public property. So to the comment of calling the police, certainly give them a call when you see them on Parkerville Road. We're mobilizing at the next road if you think that's illegal. The reality is, is they went in and they started taking materials off-hours while they were doing their night work. It was brought to our attention, not by Mr. Palmer, by the-- It was brought to our attention, not by Mr. Palmer, by the, Mr. Ferber, who lives on the corner of Parkerville and Route 9. Personally, ownership, myself, went over to meet with him directly, left him a personal note when he wasn't able to be reached, got back to me within 24 hours, told him I'd take care of it immediately, wasn't aware it was going on, made it very clear that that wasn't within the hours of operation or what we had agreed to with Diesel Direct. We immediately told them that they could only be there during the gate hours that they were allowed. They agreed to that. We also worked with Eversource's liaison department, which is the person that spoke with John Palmer, and we made sure that any evening site work went over to Westboro to a desolate parking lot to minimize noise. But this is, in my view, an excellent, excellent example of a company doing the right thing in the community that they live in, work in. So I don't really see any need to spend any more time talking about this. We addressed it.
So Mr. Ferris, just a quick question. Did you, do you have some sort of agreement or arrangement with Eversource for them to use?
Yeah, they're a tenant in the parking lot, correct, during daylight hours, yes.
But is, is a...
And we did this as a courtesy, but from, when we found out that what they had agreed to free with the select board wasn't working at the transfer station. So we tried to step in and help the community with a gas line that was occurring on Route 9, and they were mobilizing on Parkerville Road, and we're getting the blame for that noise. Some of the noise, I'm sure, came from the parking lot because they did have lights on on Parkerville Road. We have the videos to document what happened and where it happened. But the point is, I think there's a very accusatory tone, rather than a, this is a new company that came to the community, is listening to the direct feedback, has the names and the CEOs gone out and met with the direct affected parties, including John Palmer and I, who had a discussion on Diesel Direct, and he got my direct word when we had a meeting in Marlborough, standing in front of watching our daughter's gymnastics, "I'll take care of it, John." And frankly, getting a tenant eviction inside of like 22 days isn't an easy thing. And we had to put some money up to make it happen, but it was the right thing to do, and we took care of it.
So I thank you for that, Mr. Ferris. But when they want, when Eversource wanted to have a construction staging area for them to do night work, did you think that they would only be there before, between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m.?
Yeah, we thought they were getting their equipment during business hours and going out to work at the site, and then bringing it back when they concluded the work in the morning hours. And what turned, what turned out is they had millings that were problematic, dropping off at the transfer station. Kathy Cook had offered to let them use the transfer station. There was some sort of issue with, you know, compliance to town codes and bylaws with how they drove their vehicles. And we tried to step in and help Eversource, and we got a kick in the teeth from the noise that they were creating on Parkerville Road, and it got assigned to our property. So we looked into it further and found out there were some lights on that were being turned on on our property. I immediately went over and met with Mr. Ferber. I went to high school, in grade school, with his niece, and I apologized and told him I'd take care of it immediately, and that's what we did. And we have them now trucking all their material to Westboro, to a remote parking lot that we own.
So, Mr. Ferris, if at 10:15 or 10:30 p.m., if we do detect, you know, inappropriate activity on your site, what would your recommendation be to a resident?
I would go over and ask for who the supervisor is, and I'd treat them like human beings and act, you know, what their understanding is of the use of the parking lot, and I'd try and redirect their knowledge and work with them because they're a public utility providing gas to our residents in the town. That's me. That's how I'd deal with it. I wouldn't jump the gun and call the police on somebody, just like, I'd work with people like I do in a small, like, people and relationships. But you do what you think is best.
Well, so, Mr. Ferris, we were told by your attorney that Eversource just happened upon your lot because it was vacant and did not have permission to be there. That's where the, that's where the police came from.
I don't think that's, I was just listening to Brian. I don't think Brian even remotely alluded that they just randomly showed up on our property. They contacted us on and off when they were originally going to do their work on the road, tried to start doing the deliveries for the town, and it became problematic for their execution. And they came back just and said, "We're really screwed. This thing's going to be a mess for a ton of extra months if we have to keep following these procedures. Would you be willing to help out?" We tried to help them out. So that's it.
Okay, so there's not going to be any more noise off-hours on that site?
No, 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 let me be crystal clear. I don't control Eversource's pipe work in the middle of the night on Route 9.
Not on Route 9, on your property?
No, no, let me back up. There's a ton of noise occurring on Parkerville Road, and it's been a problem for our employee there as well. And she's called the police and tried to get, you know, a decent night's sleep. So I'm not going to speak for Eversource and what they're going to do or what they're not going to do. What I'm going to say is, I have a working gate that we've been gating off the property. They should not be in there after those hours.
Okay.
And they should, they should be bringing their machines and equipment back during normal business hours and taking them. They were temporarily, because we told them, like, it's a problem putting them down at the end of the next street. What's that, Middle Road, I think? But again, I think, like, this is where, really where, you know, I get frankly worked up. And the reason is, is because it's a very accusatory tone, rather than an understanding that you've got a CEO that grew up in the community, lived here 50 years, knows these people by name, takes these issues seriously, steps in and does the right thing. This, you're not like going to beat on me like that guy that owned the gas station on the other side of town. I'm not that guy. I'm a lawyer, I've got a serious set of businesses in town, and frankly, I don't like all the calls and all the, like, issues that come up being a local business person.
Anyone else?
I, I don't know what's up with Eversource. I'm going to give Brian a break for a minute. I just heard two different, you know, stories, a little confused. But there's another property in town, it's quite a big eyesore in our downtown area, and I just found out that that's Eversource as well. So they're maybe offering some...
So that's a completely different situation?
Right. So I don't think it's an allowed use. I have, I have, my issue is the noise, and I know, Brian, you remember, kind of in a funny way, you said, Debbie, you've brought up noise now three times. And so this is now the fourth time. It's not ironclad when it comes to noise and trespass. And I got very, I'll tell you, I, I was, I'm going to say I was pleased the way that you dealt with Diesel Direct. I was like ecstatic, to be honest, when I saw that. But in the other note, seeing a person, a resident, that is having, you know, a bad night's sleep, noise, doesn't know where to go, gets bounced around between the health department and the building department, and doesn't know whether to go to the police, it becomes very, I guess, concerning, I think, for residents. And that is less to do with you than our process, is that our noise bylaw isn't ironclad. It was intended that the industrial part, which is actually a piece that I wrote with Heather Elker, who was the health director at the time, it was taken out at the last minute by the select board. So there really isn't an industrial noise kind of piece. We can infer because there's contractor and some other wording in there, but there had been an industrial piece. But still, industrial noise needs to be referred to the Board of Health. And I think it's up to this board, then, to write something into the conditions. Unfortunately, that's not going to help across...
Well, we have conditions now with hours of operation, and the use was storage, not construction and staging.
Right, but you guys, like respectfully, I'm going to tell you this as direct as I can. Ninety-eight percent of the noise that came from the site was coming from Parkerville Road.
Mr. Ferris, I was speaking through the chair, through the chair. I was speaking, you're not to interrupt anybody. So this, these are conditions of our current site plan approval beyond the, my understanding is that the, a public utility is not compelled to follow town noise bylaws. That's what the health department said.
I understand it, but it's on private property. I mean, when we talk about utilities, we mean like they're going down the road, they're doing work, they're fixing the wires, they're maybe paving a road, they're actively working on something. This is on a site plan
Right.
under the control of the planning board. I don't think they have a right to be there.
Right.
I would pause on that. I mean, it's, if we go back to, you know, the national grid, I don't want to conflate issues here, but we've definitely made allowances for national grid on tree mitigation that we don't necessarily, you know, put out for the public to, well...
I don't follow.
My point is that utilities do often get more leeway to do what they need to do to protect the infrastructure. So private property, public property, I'm not sure that that's, I mean, is this a fact? Or are we saying that?
I mean, when...
Think that they're not allowed to use private property, or? Because I think I would just, you know, respectfully disagree and say that utilities do often, you know, show up. They've shown up at my house and done stuff.
They show up to store things in your yard?
Well, no, but they've shown up and worked.
Yeah, I think this is outside of that, though. There's, it's the storage part, I think, that's, you know, and noise is a trespass issue, just like light trespass. If it's audible outside of that property, it's becoming a nuisance, to be honest. A lot of towns cover this under their nuisance laws.
Mimi, if I may? Mr. Ferris, this is Lisa. Oh, well? He's still in the waiting room. Okay. So just a comment to you, sir. I appreciate that you've continued to have conversations with the neighbors, but we have neighbors here tonight, and this conversation clearly isn't over. And I would hope that, as in Diesel Direct, which had a very positive outcome, that you would continue these conversations. These residents feel they have no other place to turn. And that's not being critical of you, that is just a fact. And I would hope that these conversations could continue because this is very disruptive to people's lives. You know, as you said, you have an employee that lives over there as well, she's made some calls as well. So I would encourage you to continue down this path sooner than later. I understand you're away, but you're, you have counsel, you have other people that works for you as well. Mr. Palmer's life and other residents that have spoken tonight are being severely impacted, and it's adding on to that this has gone on for months. This isn't just a one- or two-time thing that happens. And I appreciate some of the noise probably is coming from Route 9. But there's also some noise that's obviously coming from the site. And I would hope that someone from your organization will continue these conversations sooner than, sooner rather than later, because I think these residents, you, like you said, have lived here in town your whole life, and I'm sure that you appreciate what they're going through right now. And I would hope that we don't have to have a conversation like this again, that between now and the next meeting, some positive changes can happen on this as well. Thank you.
And again, John Palmer, if I just may add one more piece. So every time I reported this to Attorney Charvell via email, and I probably have at least a half a dozen emails to Attorney Charvell on this matter, as well as going through the Board of Health, you know, every time I reported the noise complaint, you know, I took video as well. So I have video from my bedroom window where I can see the lights and the floodlights, the circular lights on top of the trucks in the parking lot, that's where the noise is coming from every time I reported it.
I guess this is to Attorney Charvell, is, so you said it should not happen, the gates are up. So from my perspective as a planning board member, we have to enforce what the site plan is, or the conditions of the site plan are, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. It's locked. So the neighbors, starting when? When did this start where the gate was in and the lights, and the, sorry, there was no access to the site?
Middle of last week.
Middle of last week. So I guess my question would be, from middle of last week to tonight, they're still here. They're claiming there's still some challenges. So are there mitigation efforts to be able to discuss with Eversource that they do not have access to the site, and the staging may have to go someplace else and not your property?
Yes.
And what is the action plan that you've discussed with Eversource for that to have occur?
I'm not privy to any because my understanding was that the gate was in place and that was mitigating the problem. But it sounds like from what they're telling me now, which is the first I've heard about it in 10 days, that it's still a problem, so we'll take it up with Eversource.
So can we have some sort of, so today is Monday, the 7th. I even think two nights of this is too much for neighbors, but by Wednesday, the 9th, can we have some action plan in writing, what the conversation was with Eversource, what the mitigation is, and what will happen with their staging area? Because I expect it to be removed, or that they comply with the 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. rules?
Yes.
And we'll have that in writing by noon on Wednesday to Karina?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the floods, and the floodlights are out, off-hours?
These requests relate directly to their activities, which I'm not denying the existence of the site plan decision, but I think it's incumbent on them, if they want to seek an exemption because they're providing public utility, that they seek it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Ferris.
Yeah, I'm on the back of a golf cart, so if reception's spotted, I'll be back in a minute. But just quickly, I did speak to the guy in our company that's dealing directly with Eversource via text while this call was going on. He confirmed with me that he said he literally just spoke with Bergeron and reconfirmed that they're not in the parking lot. I'm in Jamaica, so I don't frankly know whether, you know, he's being misled, he's calling Eversource while we speak. But the big thing, I think, like, really, I want to just hammer this home, which is, I've been in a lot of these meetings over the last year or two, and I've watched offenders come in and kind of do this circle dance around guys over issues that have upset you. And I've looked at it and said, geez, that guy doesn't get it right. Which is why, at a CEO level, running five different companies, I took the time to involve and engage myself in these minutia kind of issues, because they are real issues to the people living there, and I don't want to be known as a company that is disrespectful to its neighbors. And I took very aggressive steps to get Diesel Direct removed from that lot, and not without costs, not without legal challenge, not without meetings. All of this stuff has to happen. And frankly, at the end of the day, if we had probably enacted the gate, we would have maybe been able to avoid this. But the reality is, is we've been sitting, we probably would have known about the gate had we just had the building inspector come down and sign off on it. We would have said, oh shit, not powered up, and we would have gotten our bond money back. But that bond thing didn't get done, in my view, the way every other town does, which is, would send Gene or the other inspector down and say, okay, put the fence in, okay, put the gate in, okay. He lowered the lights, let's give him back 60, 70 grand of his 80 grand. Instead, it's turned into this frankly pissing match over a third-party reviewer and the cost, and it's not true.
I think this is inappropriate. This is Marnie Houlihan, I'm sorry, Mimi, I overstopped. This is inappropriate. Mr. Ferris, this is not the argument right now.
Well, I'm telling you, I gave, we didn't know what I'm working...
It's not, it's not your platform to have this conversation.
You asked me the question, I'm giving you the answer. You went to B.C., you know etiquette is to just be fair and cordial. I'm being cordial with everybody on this call.
But this is not the agenda item. The agenda item is the noise.
You just brought up the gate, and I explained why we didn't know the gate wasn't connected. Because we never did the formal inspection. It's directly related to this issue.
Dave, this is Lisa. Again, can you just commit to working with these neighbors to try to resolve some of these issues?
100%.
Thank you.
I'm going to continue to do that. So that is a given.
Okay.
And you can, you guys all have my cell number. If something comes up where you don't feel like you're getting it addressed quickly enough, I will text you back and I'll answer you, probably within an hour if I have my cellphone next to me. Same thing I do with residents.
Okay, thank you.
David is working with the neighborhood on all of this.
Okay.
And he continues to work with the neighborhood on all of this, and I have had direct conversations with him about these issues, you know, including the Diesel Direct and the termination of the contract there. I mean, I'm thrilled with that because that was an ongoing issue for a long... I mean, I'm thrilled with that, because that was an ongoing issue for a long time, and it got resolved. So, you know, I'm raising this issue now, because it didn't seem clear to me, you know, why the utility was using the parking lot, the contractor's yard, as a staging area for their, for their public utility roadwork. Plain and simple.
Thank you. So, this, it sounds like this is being resolved. We'll get a plan on Wednesday? Is that Wednesday? Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing. 250 Turnpike Road, contractor's yard building, major site plan approval. So, I'd just like to mention that this meeting was called just for this specific agenda item, to give these proponents an opportunity to move through to approval quickly. So, we, the planning department is working an extra night. Volunteers are all here an extra night. And we were assured that we would have all the materials in on time. And in our application, it states that any, any material must be submitted to the department at least seven days prior to a hearing. And this was submitted late on Wednesday night, didn't go out to department heads until Thursday morning, and it's at the planning board's discretion if this constitutes a constructive request for a continuance. So, I will leave that to the, to the planning board to make that decision. Mr. Stein.
I don't know if we need to go that route. I think that we can probably collaborate with the proponent to extend the decision date. That would be my preference, is just have a conversation about it. But, I mean, if they're not, if you won't, then I guess we would, you know, go that route. Maybe instead of answering-
I'd like to address a couple of things, if you don't mind, when it's my turn to speak, of course.
Maybe just go through the rest of the board.
Yeah.
I think I've said what I have to say.
Yeah, I, I don't think we had enough time, given the new site plan and all the information, to receive that on Thursday. That gives us Friday, and most of us work, so it makes it a little bit challenging to get a thorough review further. I would like to collaborate with you to try and figure out if we can kind of extend the decision date. Otherwise, I will defer to the board, but I think if we can collaborate and come up with something, I'm not prepared to make a decision tonight.
I just like to say that I think that we all need seven days, not just this board, but other boards and committees, and also the public. I'm concerned also that we have a Jewish holiday, and that by the time that the plan was able to go out to boards and committees, I believe it was the beginning of Rosh Hashanah. So, anybody that celebrates and would be looking to review the plan may not have had the opportunity. So, I honestly think that there should be more of like a checklist, basically, that, you know, check the list and make sure that you have everything in, and then the board makes the decision. This is an example where I think Karina went above and beyond, as she usually does, to try to accommodate and has left it to the board. I'm also thinking that we can make some kind of arrangement to, you know, move the date, but I don't think the board had enough time. I certainly didn't.
Ms. Brashio?
I have nothing further to add.
Let's be clear about the chronology, if we may, just so we're, we level set the facts. Again, I'm Brian Charville, Chief Operating Officer and General Counsel for Ferris Development Group, here on behalf of the FD 250 Turnpike. We all received Fussin O'Neill's comment letter on September 20th, Friday. Our team, along with our civil engineer, Mr. Tetro, worked to respond to their very limited number of comments, their credit, on Friday, September 27th. Not to quibble, but I just want to set the facts straight. We don't deny that part of the submission requirement is hard copy. But our understanding is, staff, because there were not hard copies on the 27th, did not do anything with them. And so, that is what contributed to, from the 27th and on.
Stop you right there. When, what time did those PDFs come in on the 27th on Friday?
The end of the business day.
What time is the end of the business day in Southborough Townhouse on Friday?
I'm not sure offhand.
Noon. So, they came in at 5:38. So, they came in on Monday.
Right, but the suggestion that's been presented until I begin to speak is that nothing was ready to be sent, nothing existed until Thursday.
Well, it was, I didn't say nothing existed. It wasn't, it was incomplete.
Because hard copies had not been received.
Correct.
Right, but there were PDF copies in existence at 5:00 PM on Friday, September 27th. So, it wasn't like there was nothing submitted to the town-
Could I interject?
Until Thursday, October 3rd.
So, Mr. Attorney Charville, I received an email from Attorney Benan indicating that the submission was not complete in the PDF, let me finish, and, on Friday, and that they would be sent to me with lighting plans that were not included early next week. On Tuesday, I received an email from Attorney Benan, who has been very pleasantly working with us, with a revised set of site plans, says please replace these with the ones that you received on Friday. At that point, I told him, where are the hard copies? He said he was going to deliver them the next day. You came in, Attorney Benan came in and had not followed the process that is outlined in a guidance handout that I provide that says plans must be collated, the documents must all be there. He came in with just plans. He went back to the office, came back with the response letter. It was not collated. My assistant assisted him in this room to help collate that package. It was 4:30 PM, okay? At which time, the next morning, because I leave at 5:00, the next morning, I have to review that the PDFs match the hard copies. On occasion, there have been submissions where that does not happen, and that creates extreme confusion if I piecemeal things out to departments, to the planning board, okay? So, that's not the process we take, because it's my job to help the planning board be able to quickly and easily understand the information and not confuse them with multiple submissions of the same submittal, okay? So, I'm not going to, and then I did provide that guidance in a couple of meetings, hard copy, email, and I think you're always copied on these for the most part, that explains what is required for resubmissions, resubmittals, revised submissions, et cetera. That wasn't felt. So, on, I believe it was Thursday morning, I have to check here on my notes, but when I had reviewed them and everything matched, I immediately sent them to Fussin O'Neill so that they can do a follow-up peer review. I immediately send them to the planning board so that they can get the information that has been determined to be complete, and then it also gets distributed to the town departments for their review. Can you imagine the confusion had I sent out just a PDF on Friday, followed by a revised set of plans on Tuesday, followed by a hard copy set to the planning board members, and there are also a couple of departments that also still require hard copies? That that would have created, and the extra effort to make that happen so that we're not creating confusion, so that we can streamline your process and not make it go longer. It is not in my control that you didn't submit on the time that you were required to. You were informed, it's public knowledge that the townhouse closes at noon on Fridays, right? You've been, this is not your first application, right? You come into the townhouse, you work with us, et cetera. I can't imagine that you're not aware of the hours of operation here, specifically because often you come in at 4:30 knowing we should close at 5:00, and then expect us to process everything within that timeframe. You're not the only applicant. There are other applicants, but we do our best to try and process your information. So, we're trying to help you. I'm trying to help you. I can't do more than continue to try and give you the information you need so that you can do that. The planning board added a meeting to try and help you. We're all here to try and help you, but it's a two-way street, and, um-
Thank you. I just wanted to speak to the fact that didn't, the suggestion had, I thought, had been till I began to speak, that the board, and more importantly, the planning department, had not received anything until last Thursday, and that was not the case, in the sense that we submitted something Friday, the 27th, by email, and then began to follow with other materials, slip sheets, I would say, to supplement the plans, at the beginning of last week. That's all.
But you understand our perspective now as well as I've clarified?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
What date would the board suggest, or what date works after? I think there's a meeting on the 21st and the deadline of the 25th, so what would the next date be, Adam Chair?
I'm sorry.
And also, I would just say, let's all keep in mind, Fussin O'Neill's feedback on last week's updated plans, I think, will be imminent.
I'm sorry?
I think Fussin O'Neill's feedback on the updated plans from last week will be received very soon.
Okay.
May I?
You may.
Okay. You'd, if I were in your position, I'd be looking to give us the 21st as a deliberative meeting.
Yes.
Session, and then, you know, with the 4th being best-case scenario, the night that we would approve. So, that would be, what do we usually do, three days extra, four days? Five days? In case it quote-unquote "snows." So, that's November 9th.
Sounds good.
I thought we said five days?
It's the Friday, so Monday is the 4th.
Sorry. So, do we want to do a vote now, or not so much?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll move the planning board, in collaboration with the proponent of 250 Turnpike Road, extend the decision date to November the 8th, 2024.
And continue the public hearing to-
Well-
Separate motion?
Yeah, we're going to do that separate.
Okay.
Yeah.
Second. I have a motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes?
Houlihan, yes.
Demiri, yes?
Brashio, yes.
The reason I didn't want to necessarily extend the public hearing, I mean, your engineer is here, I mean, is there stuff we're going to go over tonight, or?
We'd be happy to. Absolutely.
Okay. I don't have any questions right now personally, because I'm, I usually wait for peer review as a planning board member before I, um-
Well, we'd say-
Delve into that kind of thing.
Their memo on September 20th reflected their substantive review. They had reviewed everything. It's just in the meantime, we've come up with a new version that responds to the points they raised.
Right.
And a few points that the building commissioner had raised as well. And points that were raised during the August 19th hearing.
That's fair. Okay. I'm going to hold off for now.
Hold off?
On asking any questions.
So, we expect that next Fussin O'Neill memo hopefully will say that the points they raised have been addressed, and so there's no open issues for that clause, at least from peer review perspective.
Yeah. So, how does the board feel about them presenting the plans they have tonight?
I'd be okay with it.
Is that what you were alluding to?
Yes.
Of course, a part of me doesn't want to stay very late at night, considering we've made a special effort to be here, but considering your engineer is here, I think it would be worthwhile for us to hear that, particularly to go over the specifics addressing Fussin O'Neill's comments, and then the feedback and whatever changes you made specific to the August 19th plans, and then the building inspector's plans.
Mr. Maria?
Yes, I agree, it would be very helpful to hear the updates.
Ms. Brashio?
Yes, I agree, and I do have a question that I raised on 8/19 that I don't see addressed anywhere in the plan, so I'll wait, I'll wait till you go through, and then I'll ask that question. Thank you.
Okay. Back to you.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is George Benan, Assistant General Counsel with Ferris Development, and with me is Brian Charville, General Counsel and Chief Operating Officer of Ferris Development, and also with me is James Tetro, Professional Engineer with Expedited Engineering. So, we have recapped some of the history just recently, but we have, just for clarification, we had last met on September 9th, and at that hearing, there wasn't much substantive discussion, because we had been waiting for Fussin O'Neill's peer review comments. We received those comments on September 20th, and you'll find the plans in front of you are reflective of changes made because of those comments, the comments made here during the August 19th hearing, and also comments provided through a letter by the building commissioner, Commissioner Lund. In addition to the plans you have in front of you, you'll also find a letter by our engineer, James Tetro, which addressed a response to each of Fussin O'Neill's comments and how changes were implemented to the plans, and if changes were implemented at all. And with that, I was planning initially to turn it to the planning board to ask questions, thinking that perhaps you had reviewed the plans, but I could point to a few major changes that we had, we had done. So, first off, pursuant to Commissioner Lund's letter, he had asked for a parking summary, which stated the parking calculations, and you'll find, they were originally, they were in the original plans, but we have also moved them to the site layout plan. You'll find them in the top right-hand corner. He additionally requested that parking bumpers be placed or identified in each one of the parking spaces, and we've done that with what I believe to be called wheel stops. And lastly, shoot that, what do we call the third item? There was a third item, and I just can't think of it off the top of my head, but we'll move on. If you, there were some discrepancies with the fencing on the site layout plan and the landscape plan, the lighting plan.
The third issue for the building commissioner was updated parking count to be denoted for
That was the first one I had mentioned. There's a third item, though.
Surfacing, if there are item or-
Oh, I know what it is. It's a loading area, including a loading area.
Yeah.
And you'll find that loading area included to the west side of the proposed contractor's building. Next, there were some discrepancies with the fencing, and if you recall, the fencing had extended, the fencing to the south of the proposed building had extended too far west, and it was basically blocking the proposed 40B entrance. So, we have fixed that on all the sheets, and you'll see more clearly now that the fencing ends with the gate, basically. There was also some additional fencing to the west of the lower-level parking lot that ran from the footbridge down south to basically the zone line, and that has now been removed on all the sheets. Oh, and also, this wasn't a comment, but we have since removed the six parking spaces to the north of the proposed contractor's yard. The additional parking spaces were unnecessary, and by removing them, we feel that we've created more maneuverability on the site and more of an open lane. On the landscape plan, which is where many of the comments were, I'll flip to it. You'll see, and this also may coincide with the existing, existing conditions plan. There was a cherry tree on the upper parcel that has been removed to reflect what is now existing and what we intend for there to be, which is nothing, just a, basically a roundabout area. On the landscape plan also, you'll notice that a budding Route 9, there have been five, there have been, they're labeled as C-K and TS on the landscape plans, and they are eastern red cedars and flowering dogwoods. They are now, they have now been added, and this is to reflect what the 2022 major site plan approval indicated. So, we, so that's reflective of that. Also, on the landscape plan, there has been existing locust trees added, both to the, if I can dis- both to the, if I can describe it, the new landscaping area to the northeast of the lower-level, lower-level parking lot. That locust tree wasn't there originally. It's, it's there now and will remain. And also, the entrance of the lower-level parking lot, to the left of the entrance, there was another existing locust tree, or oak tree, rather, that was not on the plan, but now has been added. Those are the changes that just jump out to me right now. And there, I'm sure there are more once we take a deeper dive in. With that, I mean, I'll open up to any questions if anyone here has.
Yeah. There seems to be some light spill on photometric.
Mm-hmm.
Want to speak to that?
Which sheet are you looking at?
L8.
L7? Or L8?
L8.
And where's the spill? Right by it.
So the existing three-story brick building onto Turnpike Road, where there seems to be like a curve, it's a, there's a number 316. It's a little hard to see. I had to put it on my iPad and like expand it out. But if you look really carefully, there's definitely light spill onto Turnpike Road.
Okay.
Do you see what I mean?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll have the lighting engineer go on that.
Again, usually I wait for Fussin' O'Neill to do that, but I bet they will. That's all I had.
Ms. Houlihan?
Thank you very much. I appreciate the overview. As I mentioned, I did not have a chance to really review this in depth. So I appreciate the overview. And I would also just point to your engineer if there's anything that you might have missed that should be drawn. I mean, I think my only comment was the concern of tributaries. I mean, as we know with climate warming, I know you've looked to all those different sites. I'm just curious as to the amount of rain flow that we have, those small little tributaries that don't necessarily show up, how they're mitigating, or even how they're doing with severe rainstorms. And obviously, until we have them, I understand your points in the, in the letter back around Fussin' O'Neill's comments and our worries about those little tributary streams. But it still remains a very big concern for me, particularly when we see things like what happened in Asheville, that this will impact the neighborhood. And those little tributaries do make a difference, especially when you have a lot of land movement and just change to your, your structure and your heart. So no comment, so much as I need time to digest this, which I appreciate that we will have.
Ms. Demiria?
Hi. Thanks for the overall view of the changes. I wanted to ask you about the loading. You mentioned the loading on the, I guess it's the west side. What, what happens at this loading dock? Are there bays? I mean, because each of the contractors' buildings have their own, is it an overhead door of some sort? So what's happening in the loading area?
Each bay will have a person walk-in door and a roll-up door. And so the suggestion from Mr. Lund was that we designate, as is required by the zoning bylaw, a loading area. And that's what is shown to the west of the proposed building. And it would just be painted in a way designated loading with a sign on the wall so that vehicles that need to load and unload park there temporarily.
And, and again, James Taitrol, Expedited Engineering, that loading area measures 10 by 55, which is much bigger than the expected usual parkings in front of each of those roll-up doors.
And so thank you for that. And so it's anticipated that it's just, it's just really kind of like drop-off? Pull up, unload, and leave? There've been no trucks hanging around or anything like that? It's really kind of?
Correct. There'd be a temporary place for loading and unloading. And I'll note that it's only there because the zoning bylaw requires it.
Thank you.
Ms. Brascio?
Thank you. Thank you for the overview. Thank you for making the changes that you did. It certainly answered a lot of the questions that I had. So I appreciate that. The one question I still do have is, and I mentioned this on the 8/19, was in looking at L9, the last page, it shows the berm going across where the new entrance to the 40B would be. So I would be interested to see where the driveway is going to be on that. And that actually creates a question, Karina, for you, that if we approve this plan with this current berm here, and then they have to do a curb cut for the driveway, is that, would that require a minor site plan approval? I mean, how do we do this that we don't have to come back?
Let's get oriented to the page.
Sorry.
L9.
L9. And you'll notice behind the contractors' bays, there's a berm, which what I would assume would be the entrance into the proposed 40B.
If I may, at the, it's called the southwest corner of that area behind the proposed contractor's yard building, and, and not directly behind, but beyond.
Mm-hmm.
That berm exists right now. Yeah, so we're not, what we're actually going to end up doing is, if you see the landscape area immediately to the west of the building, and there's a curb line on the side of that landscape area, and it's, let's say the landscape area is eight feet wide and the curb away from the building, that curb line will continue south to that existing berm. The existing berm that runs east-west, that is east of that, on the Parkerville side of that sort of the new, let's call it intersection point, is going to be gone. The only part that will remain temporarily would be the part of it, again, that is, is to the, then is to the west of that point. Yep. Just where Karina's showing. Exactly. Right there, that, that berm exists right now. And, and at least as part of this filing, is not proposed to go away, but will go away or would go away as part of the 40B plan. And now if Karina goes a little bit to the, to the other side, that berm there is going to go away, period, as part of this approval.
Okay. So I guess, I'm, I'm still unclear. So just, just, so again, process-wise, Karina, if we approve this with the berm there, and then that berm gets a curb cut in it for a potential proposed 40B, do they need to come back? Because the site plan we're approving has the berm in place. Does that make sense?
There's potential there because if it impacts the drainage on the site, if you're changing the grading and that berm acts as drainage, like some kind of containment to keep the drainage into the subsurface system, right? So when, when you have the 40B designed and your stormwater prepared, it would probably be best if they approach the planning board at that time when they have their final plans in order and have really determined what they're going to do, then to ask for, if it would be a modification. Because there are some things that do require modification, changes to landscaping, lighting, moving roadways 10 feet, moving buildings 10 feet from what was proposed. But if there are specific things they could come and ask at that point, does this trigger modification?
Okay. Yeah. The, my point in asking is we're talking about potentially streamlining a process. And to me, if it's something that could be addressed at this point that would help in the future as we move forward potentially with that project as well. Thank you.
And if you go to the grading plan, we might be able to, James could probably explain his anticipated, what you might think might happen there, if it does impact drainage or if it doesn't. Just by a simple, quick look at what's happening with the, with the contours there. If you remove the berm, what's going to happen?
Yeah. And it doesn't show on the grading plan, but we have from control point, huge mass of spot shots all around that parking area. And that area right now, that existing berm that we're saying will remain as part of this approval, that actually just catches water going south and directs it to behind what would be about the fourth or fifth unit from the left where there's a catch basin right now against that existing berm that's over there. But this will actually drain to a pair of catch basins on the lot to the south, that little bit of area there.
Which, which, which is within the drainage easement?
Yep.
That exists, right? So.
Maybe. Yes, you're right. It, it is. It is. Yes.
That's my guess, just from the way it's laid out. And there is an existing drainage easement document that was required as part of the temporary certificate of occupancy for the 250 Turnpike Storage Facility.
Thank you, Karina.
But to Ms. Brascio's point, why don't you do it now? I didn't understand that. You had a great point. Like, why, why come back for a modification for something that you can just fix now?
I, I guess I'd have to confess that I didn't think changing a berm on a parking lot triggered site plan review. I guess I thought that was cutting a berm on a right-of-way.
It's definitely a modification. Yeah.
Okay. I mean, is there, I guess I also might have thought there's some threshold of modification, which is regarded as being insignificant enough to, to not require a new filing. But you're saying that that is significant?
Well, that's a gamble. I mean, you'd be going to the building department for a permit, I would think, for that work? No?
Not for berm removal? Is that what you're trying? I think what's going to happen is that when you put that roadway, that driveway access in for the 40B, you're impacting the driveway in that area for that contractor building, unit, for that contractor bay building, right? So you're impacting this, it'll be impacting this site plan because you'll be putting the driveway access in all the way through. So it's, it could trigger a modification. I don't want you to think that it doesn't, but it could.
Okay.
I don't want to just clearly say it doesn't.
Fair enough.
So the expectation is that the, the site is built as approved in the, the site plan? And any changes may not require, or a modification, but they have to come back before this board to decide whether it requires a modification or not. So it seems to me it would be easier to just figure out how to do without it and be one step ahead of the game.
I take your point. I wasn't thinking that far ahead.
The other thing I'd mention, too, is although the word berm is used, I think what's out there physically is more just a concrete curb. It's not a berm that we're used to seeing in other sorts of projects.
Well, sometimes we refer to berm as like the Cape Cod berm. Like, it's just a little asphalt one foot wide, as opposed to like an earth berm.
Yeah.
Right? So it could, it's interchanged.
But we'll try to revisit it and remove it in that area.
And if you look at Section 174-10 site plan, I think it's H, I, or H1 of those, towards the end of the code, it'll tell you the requirements of a modification to determine if it's insignificant or not.
Okay.
Or whether it requires modification.
And I appreciate the, the information. This is exactly the sort of thing that, where the board is helping us and not letting something, letting us walk into a mistaken presumption and, and cause more process to have to be involved.
Not that we don't like seeing you as often as possible.
Well, everybody seems to be making me the fall guy for the meeting. And everybody was saying, oh, your engineer's here.
So I had asked about the existing sign at the last meeting because the approved site plan said that the sign wasn't going to change, just the name.
And it's not.
But it's changed. It has changed.
Oh, which, which sign are you referring to?
Beehive.
Well, which?
By the upper entrance?
Yeah. So the detail and the size on that sign.
And just so we're on the same page, you're referring to the monument at the driveway entrance, is that right?
Yes.
As opposed to the wall sign on the building itself?
Correct. The one by Route 9.
Understood.
So the cherry tree's gone, and that was supposed to remain. The, and there's no, there was landscaping on the north side of the Beehive building, which is not there. So is that being mitigated somehow? So that was, when you came forward with the bond proposal, that was done. So that's been ripped out since?
No.
Okay. So you told us that it was done?
No.
Yeah. That wasn't bonded?
It absolutely was.
No, it wasn't.
It was included. I went plant-by-plant as I prepared the bond estimate, and I included the plants that were shown on the north side of the building that had not been planted.
Okay. I think, because I went over there to make sure that they were planted, and they were.
They've not been planted. And we included them in our count of plants for the bond.
Okay. I'll, I'll look into that, and I'll get back to you on the 21st. So 174-13F requires a 20-foot landscape buffer on any non-residential property along the full length of any boundary with any residentially-zoned property?
Our position is that we are adhering to that provision with the 20, 20-foot landscape buffer behind the proposed building. And.
So you're saying grass is a landscape buffer?
I am.
Have you looked at Webster's Dictionary? Under landscape buffer? Grass is not a landscape buffer. And I think that I told you that before.
You did say that before, but landscaping is not defined in the zoning bylaws. This is a grassed area. We're considering it landscape. But there are a few other points I'd like to make in regard to this. Let's not lose sight of the practical impact of this. We're removing existing tar and replacing it with a landscape buffer. It's objectively being improved. And there's an impervious there, perviousness there now that will be mitigated by what is proposed. And next, I'd also like to say that we, before coming to the planning board, we were in front of the zoning board to receive, to request relief for having, allowing two principal uses and two buildings on one lot. Chair Luttrell appeared at many of the hearings and raised this exact point. This is a zoning bylaw, and it was not raised as an issue at the zoning board level. In fact, the ZBA with a plan very much like this one, that showing that the proposed building is wholly included in the industrial zone and showing the landscape buffer in the back in approved our zoning relief.
So landscaping is reviewed under site plan, which is the planning board?
But that is, it would be on them to grant the relief if required. It would be a zoning board, but it would be zoning relief.
And you requested a variance from that?
We did not, but it was brought up on several occasions. And we originally walked in, we originally walked into the ZBA with a plan that encroached 20 feet or so into the residential zone. The ZBA, us, and even yourself, Chair Luttrell, we spoke about the location extensively at the ZBA level. If there was an issue, the ZBA would have flagged it. I also would like to say that in the 2022 approved site plan, this was not an issue. This was not flagged. Yet there was existing tar abutting the zoning line.
And there was a privacy fence that was supposed to go there?
But there was still existing tar. It wasn't landscape behind that zoning line.
Okay.
You would agree with me?
So, so here we are for a modification of the site plan. That means we start all over again. If we miss something the first time, we have another shot at it. Landscaping is under site plan, and it's not up to the ZBA to approve issues on site plan and in parking. It's up to this elected board.
I would respectfully disagree with you. That would require zoning relief. And we were at the zoning board. It was brought to their attention.
So I disagree with you.
Okay. I understand.
And a landscape buffer is the edge of land provided along a perimeter of a lot where landscaping is used to screen or to, or screen one use from adjacent uses. So lawn, unless you let it grow for a very, very, very long time, is not screening.
Well, the spirit of that provision is to provide adequate screening. Is it not as what you're, how you're reading it?
Yes.
There are trees behind or around the detention basin and right after the 20-foot buffer, you'll find a forested area, which provides adequate screening.
Are those shown on the plan?
There. I mean, it's a forest.
Not individually, no. Not individually, no.
But we can certainly outline where the trees begin, and it's going to be...
I thought they were cut down.
No. They were cut down. Some were cut down around the detention basin.
Yeah, that's what's right behind there.
There's more than one tree there, though. It's a forested area.
Our code says a landscape buffer.
If I can just interject, I think the code, I think the code also requires you just show trees that are over six-inch diameter on the existing conditions. So often during major site plan applications, the applicant is requested to show those when there's a question of if there's adequate screening. That might be something to consider that would help your argument to that effect.
I'd also like to state that Fussin' O'Neill did not bring this up as an issue.
So what are you saying?
I'm saying...
That this elected board doesn't matter what we say?
Of course it matters.
We have to take the word of the zoning board or Fussin' O'Neill?
Fussin' O'Neill is tasked with making sure plans are compliant. It's literally their job.
Okay.
They did not flag this as an issue, and it's been brought to the ZBA's attention. And anyone who's listened to you, you've brought this up numerous times. The Fussin' O'Neill is going to have to flag it if they find it to be an issue. They did not.
Well, I do. I find it to be an issue.
Just to be clear, Fussin' O'Neill is not the only reviewing body. The planning board also has the opportunity to provide their comments, so...
I understand that. It's our position.
So I've heard your arguments, and I don't accept them. I'm going to move on. The handicap spaces, they're shown on the landscape plan but not on the site layout plan, so are they going to be there?
They are shown, but it's very, I apologize, it's a very faint line. Yeah, I can see the two symbols just off of the designation of four spaces with the hatched between them.
Oh, I couldn't. I couldn't see them.
I've gotten good at looking for the grayed outlines of different layers of AutoCAD printing, and, but, yeah, that's, I apologize, that's barely visible, so. And it might not show up with another generation of reproduction here on the screen, so.
So most of the, oop, most of the trees on the existing plan are now there, and I thank you for that. But on the western property line, there was also supposed to be underplanting of bayberry, and that's not on there? On either landscaping or the, well, I don't think they're there, so it would be on the landscape plan?
The far western side, Chair Luttrell?
Yeah. So there are existing trees there, and they were to be underplanted with bayberry?
You're right.
On Note 18, you have any unforeseen reduction in landscaping? I would just remove unforeseen, any reduction in landscaping needs to be approved by the planning board? Oh, on the new driveway that's proposed on the south side of the Beehive Building, has that been before ConCon?
Yes, that was part of the review process with ConCon.
So that driveway was there during, in the plans? Because it just showed up on these plans here. So it was on their plans that they approved?
Yes, because we had, we, in fact, had to discuss with them the permissibility of that because of the normal 20-foot buffer zone, but it was an area that had already been altered.
Okay.
And we argued that it was necessary in order to get access to that lower level of the building for deliveries or taking machinery out, whatever it may be. And they relented in that instance because the area had already been altered.
Okay. All right. I think that's, that's all I have for now. Yes, sir.
So John Palmer, 131 Parkerville, again. So I would be in support of this contractor's yard building being built on the parking lot, only because if done right, I believe it would be an improvement over what the parking lot has become today. And if you haven't driven by, both on Route 9 and on Parkerville Road, I'd ask you to do so so you can see what the parking lot has become. That said, I want to make sure that, you know, there's provisions made, and I think I requested this at the last meeting, and maybe you brought it up tonight, that there'd be provisions made to create some sort of screening on the south side of the property line because, you know, since the clearcutting of 125 Parkerville, which the developer owns, and then the clearcutting around the detention pond, you know, both of those clearcutting have made, you know, direct line of sight from my property and from Mr. Harvey's property onto the parking lot. So I'd ask for a provision to be made to, you know, create some sort of landscape screening, natural landscape screening for the building itself and the height of the building and everything else. I understand that there's going to be, you know, a walkway around the building and back doors to the units themselves. So I'd ask for, you know, some sort of screening so that we don't, you know, have direct line of sight into that. And then I share Barney's concern that the stormwater management has to ensure that the, that the water problem at the corner of Route 9 and Parkerville does not get any worse, because there's a problem there with, you know, water, especially in the wintertime, ice buildup at that corner. And, you know, we've seen that repeatedly, especially with the storms over the last couple, three years. And then lastly, I'd invite you, any of the planning board members or any of the development team, to take a walk on my property to see the sightlines, you know, over to the parking lot, you know, after the clearcutting was done on both those properties. So anytime you want to take a look, you can walk on my side yard.
Thank you. Sure.
So James, this comment is for you. In looking at the site layout sheet, and you have a blue dashed line describing the limits of disturbance, which is very unusual. The line, the way the line is drawn with individual little sections broken out for islands and such. And I know there was a comment in the Fussin' O'Neill review comments regarding the requirement for a lid, and that's based on whether there is greater than an acre of land disturbance.
Right.
So in looking at your septic plan that was submitted to the Board of Health that you sent to me today, it's not quite clear if the revisions to that septic system will impact the limit of disturbance as well. So perhaps you can provide an actual square foot calculation of your area of disturbance so that Fussin' O'Neill can have that information and compare it to the code requirement, one acre? Because I did a quick calculation, and it's very close to an acre.
Oh, yeah. We admit as much.
And because it's a very unusual, it doesn't look like industry standard limit of disturbance, it's very defined. And you have to think of the constructability of when you do draw a line like that, are you really only staying within those lines? Or do you need to, you know, go beyond those lines because when you dig a trench or something, it's not just a two-foot trench, whatever? You understand what I'm saying. So if you could just, you know, provide that information?
Sure.
That's not questionable.
We will do that.
Okay. Thanks.
I think Mr. Ferris wants to speak again.
Yeah, just to, we've covered a lot of ground since I've had my hand-ups. We've covered a lot of ground since I've had my hand up, so I guess I'll start from the top, which is, first, thank you for the deference in terms of putting the hearing on tonight, because I do realize and recognize everyone is a volunteer, and it's a thankless job, and you do, should get thanks from the community, at least from a resident like myself, that you did get that zoning thing passed, because I think it's good for the whole town. And so I'd start with making a goodwill deposit in our relationship, saying thank you for allowing this hearing to happen this evening. I think that both is the board making that decision and also Chair Luttrell deciding to counter it. I think in terms of stepping back and, not to hit rewind, it's late, I don't want to regurgitate this whole thing, but, you know, these letters that I've written to communicate the issues that we're feeling in this community, as opposed to any other community, and we work in dozens of communities, that's substantively different, is one where we don't feel like we're a customer to the town. And I say that respectfully, and I've got to step up for my employees who frankly don't speak their mind because they fear reprisal from a board, rather than to be open and candid. And to be open and candid when a professional like George Bannon, who's conducted himself with integrity and class through this entire process, is, for lack of a better term, you know, humiliated to the extent of, "I'm not going to accept this application because you don't have nine cover pages printed." You know, a broader step back needs to happen here at the town planning board level, which is, we're a client of yours in your community. We're trying to come into the community and be a respectful taxpayer. We're cutting checks every month to this town of $40,000, $50,000 a month, and we've made some investments in the community, so...
So the agenda item is the modification of your site plan?
And I'm raising the Fussin' O'Neill issue right now, which is when it takes six weeks to get a review with a couple of simple comments, and if you look at their comments, they're less than a half dozen, they're pretty simple comments. What I would respectfully ask this chair and this board is to look at us like a customer and say, "Was it reasonable for Fussin' O'Neill to take six weeks to turn this around?" This is an applicant trying to come out of the ground in a seasonal climate where conditions change and weather isn't a problem. We fully expected to have this hearing and another hearing, and maybe even another one, to exhaust all the issues that are important. If you want specific trees planted behind the building to create screening, that's a reasonable thing. We'd just like to hear directly what you want or what your need is. That building could have been put by right into that residential zone. It was our company's decision to work with the neighbors and listen to the feedback that we got directly from the closest abutters that asked that it be contained to the industrial side of the line, which is why and how we got to that. When we do these smaller projects within your community, this particular one at issue, we look at how this project goes as an indicative indicator of how future projects will go. We've made a significant investment in the community by trying to bring this project forward, which will generate significant tax revenue, probably to the tune of $50,000 a year of new tax revenue. But when you have an applicant before you and you refuse to have the office coordinate with our council to simply get a paper filing in, which probably no one on this board uses, everybody's on their iPad or their iMac.
David, I'm old. I can't look at PDF plans. I have to look at the paper plans.
So that's fair, but I'm just saying, try and treat George in my staff way.
Everyone is treated the same, and it says on the application what the expectations are. It's the same for everybody.
Well, I want to be totally direct. I've got 30 or 40 million parked in your community. You're asking me to leave another 60 there with rental units? I'm not sure I'm going to feel good about that. This is the, I'm looking to give you guys an off-ramp, an exit ramp, to make this a constructive project that it works well for both of us, that I can feel confident that I don't need to sell 40B units and have the town with 37 units. I can help the community reach its goals and get 137, 148, whatever.
Does that have to do with the modification of the site plan, your other projects?
What it does, yes, it absolutely does, and I'm telling you why. Because if I were in your position, Madam Chair, I would look at this Fussin' O'Neill conduct, and I would say, "Here's a concerned taxpayer. I represent the taxpayers. I want to make sure this goes really smooth for this guy because he's already flagged Fussin' O'Neill's a problem." If it takes six weeks for them to review a simple plan like this with limited comments, and then we come back and we hustle our whole team together to get things back to you on a Friday night at 5:45 in the evening, that's an indication to us it matters. We care about timing. And we want you, as the community ambassador, to look at our company and say, "These guys are trying to do it right. When we raise issues on this very site, how do they address them? Do they meet with our community members? Do they write letters to document the action? Do they step in with their lawyers and stop the offending conduct? Are they responsible to our community?" And in return, when an attorney walks into the town hall and he's missing nine printouts, you don't send him out of the building with his tail between his legs to print out new copies. You say, "Let me help you, George." That's what I'm talking about.
So our planning department should work as your...
If you're Karina's boss, I would ask you to please look at us like we are a customer and taxpayer in our community, and you're trying to protect the residents in a abutment project, and you're also trying to create economic tax base that'll pay the tax base so residents and self-pro don't all have astronomically higher tax bills, right? So just work with us. Like, be constructive.
So I'm pretty sure that we're having a meeting, this night was called just for this project.
And I started by saying, "Thank you for that goodwill deposit." Okay, I'm trying to highlight to you...
And because we don't make copies for you and do your collating, does not mean we're not working for you.
No, but what you could do, Madam Chair, respectfully, is you could call Fussin' O'Neill and say, "This is an applicant who's had an issue with your pricing. We send you a lot of business. We owe this guy $80,000 back. We've got an existing plan we're reviewing right now. We want to return some of his bond money. He's done the right thing by us. We want Fussin' O'Neill to represent the interests of the taxpayers of the town and the planning board, more specifically for compliance. But when they take six weeks to return a simple plan like this, I want you to look at it and say, "As Chair, you took on the extra heavy lifting for your board members and need to step in and say something." That's it. I thank you for taking the hearing.
Dave...
I'll conclude the way I started. Thank you for the goodwill deposit.
Dave, this is Lisa again. I think we've had such a positive meeting tonight. I hate that we've taken all of the goodwill from this board and your team that's sitting here tonight, and we're ending on a negative note again. Can we not just look at...
I raised my hand an hour ago.
No, Dave, let me finish. I listened to you speak. Please give me the same respect I'm giving you and I've given you throughout this meeting, you know? Let's not be negative. You're talking about the negativeness of all of this. We made a special meeting tonight. Your attorney, George, I can't pronounce your last name. I don't want to screw it up. I'll just say George. Attorney George, you know, he came here before us. We set a special meeting to try to meet the timeline that you're wanting to do. And we always have to end on a negative note. Can we not look at the positiveness that happened here tonight? The great dialogue and conversations that were had with the neighbors, as well as your team, Dave?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate you.
Can we just end on that note and say, "Thank you."
Yes, we can.
"Thank you to your team, and thank you to you."
Thank you. Thank you and the board. And most importantly, I thought the food drive thing was really, really cool. That was really good stuff, so thank you. And guys, have a good evening. I appreciate the extra effort you put into having the hearing tonight.
Thank you. So should we continue?
Make a motion that we continue the public hearing to November the 4th at 7:05 PM?
No, 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 to September 21st.
I was hoping for a long break.
October 21st.
I'm going to amend the motion to October the 21st, 2024, at 7:05 PM.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Just a quick discussion. What do we have between 6:30 and 7?
Well, we never have public hearings during 6:30 or 7.
Oh, we don't have public hearings at 7, okay.
Yeah.
There's always stuff to do.
We have a very full agenda with many things that...
Fabulous. Thank you. Glad I asked.
So a motion in a second, any further discussion, seeing that all in favor, Luttrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demyria, yes.
Barashio, yes.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, what do we got?
As soon as the Fussin' O'Neill review comes in, I'll forward it to you guys.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Karina.
If you have any questions, feel free to call.
Of course.
The next item on the agenda is a discussion item. The next item on the agenda is a discussion item, thirty-seven Clifford Road scenic tree, scenic road unauthorized tree removal. I think I just got an email about this. Oh, she's sending me something interesting. So last week, Ms. Houlihan received an email from Mr. Dennington that the owners of the property at thirty-seven Clifford that cut down that huge historic oak tree had proposed to replace that tree with two one-point-five to two-inch caliper Kwanzen cherry trees to the DPW for planting at a location selected by the tree warden designee. It didn't go to the planning board. Clifford Road is a scenic road. Ms. Houlihan did forward it, so we were all aware. It's on the select board's agenda for tomorrow night as a consent item. So like even if we went, we couldn't comment on it to approve the restitution. My issue is it doesn't follow the policy. It's not... Even if you don't follow the inch by inch, it's, we require a three-inch. We require the trees come out of the street tree guidelines. That's not one of them. And that this particular tree is very short-lived because they're prone to disease and pests. So I don't know if that is a good swap for an oak tree that lasted a hundred years. So should we send something to the select board to comment on this?
Well, I have a question. How is this in the select board's purview and not the planning boards?
Or both?
They're, well, it should be, it should be a collaboration, but they're the tree warden.
Okay. So if I'm, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So the quote-unquote proponent or violator did not follow the procedure, and as a result, the planning board has sort of been cut out of the loop. So it would have been on the select board to loop us in if they had chosen to. Did I ask the situation?
Correct. Yes. Mr. Dennington just did reach out to Ms. Houlihan.
He did reach out to you, but not until...
To Ms. Houlihan.
Sorry, reached out to Ms. Houlihan today or...
Last week.
No, it must have been before we posted, so that's...
September thirty-one.
Okay. But the issue is we didn't meet until tonight in order to formulate a response.
And the thing is, this happened, it happened, it happened a year ago, so why, it's the hair-on-fire moment now. I don't understand.
So I mean, I'll just throw it out there that maybe we want to send some sort of correspondence to Kathy Cook and advocate for planning board input on this matter.
Am I allowed to go? Yeah, so I think Mr. Dennington forwarded to me because I am the resident of Clifford Road and I identified that the whole thing happened over, you know, over a year ago. So I appreciate that Mr. Dennington forwarded it to me. I don't know of correspondence. I mean, at this late juncture, does it make sense to have a quick call, like someone reach out either to...
I tried.
Oh, you tried?
Yeah.
Okay. So maybe correspondence is probably the right way to go. But I would, I would also agree to Ms. Luttrell's points that it doesn't meet the policy requirements to kind of what we need, the tree, what trees you select. And, and I think my worry is, is there a disconnect between the building enforcement officer, the select board, and the planning board? Because we did receive a notice back from the building inspector who basically said we should be happy with what we've received.
Oh, that was the DPW?
Oh, that was DPW. Oh, sorry. Oh, DPW. Sorry. My apologies.
Yeah, he referenced MGL, that the maximum penalty is...
But he didn't reference our own policy. So my worry is that I think that there needs to be something stated, and if we do have correspondence, that we do have a policy in place, that we should recognize that policy, and that these are the things that, that it shouldn't be on a consent agenda.
No. Well, certainly not until there's been some consensus between the planning board and the select board. And there is a fine under the scenic road also. Mr. Murray?
Did we have a hearing on this tree yet? I'm just forgetting because it's so long.
No. So Ms. Houlihan happened to be toodling by and saw all the tree workers there, and she said, you can't cut down this tree without a hearing. And they said, oh, we're not going to touch it. And then it was gone.
So just to back up, the homeowner moved in in August of twenty twenty-three. That's when the house sold and the tree came down in...
September.
Early September. September twenty twenty-three. So this has been going on for a year. And we have had a tree hearing. So why didn't the tree warden put this on the list? We should have had a hearing. We've had a hearing in the last year. This tree should have been on the list. But to Bill Kandoff's credit, he did write what I thought was a pretty thoughtful note back last year. And he did give the homeowner a copy of not one, but two policies because we were in the middle of tree policies. So the homeowner has the information about master of law, where it clearly states the fine, that it was a public shade tree. The homeowner clearly has both policies. And actually, at the bottom of that original note, it said to contact the select board as the tree warden. So that might be why the homeowner went to Andrew Dennington because he had been the chair probably at the time, or I don't know. We just went to Andrew. Okay, but all that aside, they were told they needed to pay the fine. Did they pay the fine? So many towns, by the way, are getting very creative with, with these things. Some towns are charging the fine every day until it gets paid, and that evidently is legal. There's a lot of things that communities can be doing that, you know, in this kind of situation. I don't find it acceptable. It doesn't meet the, you know, as a Tree City USA, Tree City recommends actually two-to-one replacement and minimum one-to-one. It's very hard for two-to-one, to be honest. So this is a forty-inch oak. I looked up today, what, how old is it? Does anybody...
It's over a hundred years.
So it's a five, depending whether it's a red oak or a white oak, and it didn't specify. And who's got a picture, right? Now we don't know. But it's about a five, a five factor. So it's, it's a two-hundred-year-old tree and could be older, actually. And so the thought that a homeowner wants to replace it with a Kwanzen cherry cultivar is, you know, just says that we have really a long way to go. But it's beyond me why they haven't paid the fee yet. It's five hundred dollars, and they should have just gone to the townhouse and said, I got to pay this.
I believe they were encouraged by the DPW to perhaps propose planting a tree or trees in lieu of the fine.
Okay, so I'd like to ask Colleen if you'd put up that picture that I've forwarded. I know that you put it in the drop box to show the values of these trees. We will never see and be able to watch a tree grow like that in our lifetime. And these forty-inch trees and larger are disappearing, and some towns are getting very creative. I've been searching some of the different scenic by, scenic road bylaws for a lot of towns where towns would need to put in a replacement fee for a tree. But just to show you the value of what some towns are putting on trees, it's an inch-for-inch kind of replacement until twenty-four inches, and then they value it as like one and a half times. And so I put in the drop, or actually Colleen put in the drop box, what Newton is doing. We know Newton is a very progressive town, and they've got, of course, tree bylaw, tree ordinance, tree canopy. They've got it all, right? But it just shows they're not the only town. There's other towns that are trying to figure out what, what is the value. If you search, occasionally you hear a story about the twenty-thousand-dollar tree or the forty-thousand-dollar tree. In fact, when I first met Christina Bezanson, who was the arborist who came to help us talk about urban forest management plan, she was, told me she had been involved in a court case as an expert because the town was charging the homeowner like tens of thousands of dollars. So this is...
It's in your handout, too.
Yeah, it's probably easy to see in the handout, but this is Newton's, you know, pretty, I call it very progressive. Some people could call it aggressive. If you, if you look at where forty inches is, so if you look, this is a one-to-one replacement. So if you look at, you know, up to twenty-three inches, their required replacement inches would be, you know, twenty-three inches. But after twenty-four, it becomes, or twenty-four is for twenty-four. After twenty-five, it becomes higher. So if you, if we were to use, if this tree were in Newton, they would use for a forty-inch diameter tree, they would use eighty inches. And then that nice little orange chart down at the bottom is a replacement, you know, like a fee schedule. And I can't read it with these glasses because we have the roll glasses on.
So, so we don't have this in place in Southborough?
Right. No, but this, I think, just, we don't have this because we don't have it in our, in a bylaw. And I think that it's time that we think about protecting our scenic roads, and I have, I will in the future propose a bylaw. But this just shows what the value is. And the fact that we have a homeowner who wants to give us two little skinny trees is really an offense. Moved in, chopped down a tree within a month, and wants to replace it a year later with two skinny trees. I think that the, it's the planning, it's another thing that is wrong with this is that I thought it was the planning board that decides on the replacement trees, not DPW. Am I, is that what our policy says?
I think it's supposed to be a collaboration with the tree warden on scenic roads.
Okay. Well, I mean, I don't understand why the, why this has gone on so long, but I think that the homeowner should pay the fine, to be honest.
Ms. Brashio?
So this has gone on for a year at this point. I don't know, sending correspondence, I think, is important. But I think the correspondence we send asks them to remove it from the consent agenda tomorrow so that, you know, some form of minor discussion can take place because clearly they don't understand the policy. And that's no offense to anybody, but I think it would be fruitful to have a discussion amongst us. And I don't see at this point with delaying it till their next meeting. It's already been a year. Nothing's been done. So that would be my suggestion, Mimi, is just either reach out to Kathy via phone or send a note and just ask them to, you know, delay this item till their next meeting. And during that time, I mean, I would be happy with you delaying these things that we talked about tonight to them, you know? You know, short of even having, you know, a joint meeting and a discussion, I don't know what that serves. I think you could represent the comments that we've heard, we've heard tonight to them.
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
And I think just a lesson from this particular situation, I think the police department should know that we adhere to chapter eighty-seven, too. So when they're called to do a detail on a huge tree at the side of the road, they should check with Chris and make sure that that that's been approved to remove.
Let me ask one more question. And I should know the answer to this, but I don't. So the, the select board, it's tree warden, so they have a policy. Why does planning board on scenic roads not create our own some form of policy? I mean, I know we certainly don't want them to be in conflict, but, I mean, we have a seat at the table on hearings. And I think we should potentially look at creating our own as well.
Well, so the idea was we work together with the select board on this collaborative policy, and we thought that we could collaborate silly, sillier.
Well, guilty me being on the select board at that point, but, you know, I think the intention was good then. How's that?
Lisa, if I can just add that in the past, when Karen Galligan was DPW director, that was kind of the approach that was happening before. So the DPW and their, and when they thought there was a tree warden, as Chris and I said before, select board was determined, clarified, it would kind of go that path. So what would happen is that because they didn't want to do a consolidated hearing, like the DPW wanted to hold the public hearing on the street at the tree at noon, and that's not very conducive to safety, to planning board schedule, et cetera. And the planning board will quickly follow it up with their own meeting and vote on it. And then at some point, a decision was made, like that. That's kind of, the policy integrates both right now, and we're trying to get it to work. It just, it takes time, and we've got to pound away on it a little more. I know it seems like we're pounding for years, but this is, it's closer, and then all of a sudden it regresses a little bit. So in all fairness, that thirty-seven Clifford, the owner, ignorance is no excuse to the law, but they probably have a little bit of a barrier, understanding, understanding period, the policy or whatever. So they were counting on, probably listen to the email that says encouraging them to provide a solution instead of pay the fine. I don't know to what level they actually discussed with them to say, hey, here's the book, pick something from this. I think they were kind of just left on their own. And I'm not blaming anybody because, you know, I could probably go out there myself and make an appointment with them and say, come in and I'll show you what you need to do. But is that the level that I need to do it for these trees? You know what I mean? It always seems to be a very unique case, like this one and then the other one. So I don't know. We're trying hard, but the, you know, we need to get the internal operations of the different departments to maintain the alignment, not we agree at a meeting and then one area straggles off and says, well, we don't feel we have to do this, or, no, this is the agreement. Let's stick to it. Let's just do it and honor that.
So I will just say to that, Karina, you're, you're much kinder than myself. In my mind, a policy is only as good as the execution of that policy.
Yes.
And, and that's not happening right now. So you're very kind in how you worded it, but I'm not going to be as kind. So, thank you.
Okay. And I'm kind of happy about that, too.
So I'd like to find out from town council if we can go after these tree companies. Like, they're licensed to operate in Massachusetts, and their website says they follow all the laws in Massachusetts. And he lied. So I don't know if it's up to the homeowner to have to chase them down, but it doesn't seem right. Oh, we can on this one. Yes, sir.
These are all...
Yeah.
Mike.
Paul Carter, Six Hillside Avenue. These are trees within the right-of-way?
Yeah.
Okay, the property owners should be told. They don't own that property. They don't own those trees.
Right. But the, but I would think that tree companies that are contracted to work in Massachusetts would know that. Although I know that they don't really care because I had a little heated discussion with one near my house.
And I did have all that information, and I forwarded it when I sent all the pictures. So I have the name of the tree company and all of that.
All right. So I'll write a little letter.
So, Mimi, can I just mention that I have been working, so last July, I did put together a kind of crappy version, to be honest, of tree policy, and I got some good feedback from the board. So since that time, I've been working on making it a scenic road bylaw with a rules and regs document. It could be, could be a guide or some, you can call it some, something else, a tree handbook, maybe. But I'd like to forward that to you for the next meeting, if there's time. It sounds like we're pretty busy on the twenty-first. But for future meeting, my personal feeling is the only way we can have any real teeth is to put out something to the public, which is what some... is to put out something to the public, which is what some members of the board have said, is that we really have to do better outreach. And also to create a scenic by, road bylaw which outlines the Planning Board's jurisdiction under Chapter 40A, 15C. So I will forward those documents that I have tomorrow and maybe we can speak about it as a board.
Okay, thank you. All right, on from tree. Other business properly before the board. We had, Colleen had sent an agenda for tomorrow to attend ZBA in case we had a quorum, but the agenda didn't post, so we don't have a meeting tomorrow. So we can't have a quorum. Is anyone, I was planning on attending. Is anyone else planning on attending?
I was going to go by Z.
Oh, okay, so, all right. Okay, good. So we're good.
So it got halfway there. It got posted with, and then it had to get posted on another place. And that's the second part. Didn't, it didn't load into the agenda site. That's why. There was an issue with that.
So, Planner's Report.
I think, Mimi, you also were going to ask about the Planning Board meeting on November 25th. That's scheduled.
Oh, yeah.
So I was going to make a motion that we reschedule the November 21st Planning Board meeting to December the 2nd at 6:30 PM.
November 25th?
What did I say? Oh, Jess. I'm going to amend my motion that, thank you for the correction. Move the November 25th Planning Board meeting to December 2nd at 6:30 PM.
Second.
Does that work with everyone?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I have a motion, the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Luttrell, yes?
Well, sorry, for the discussion.
Oops.
I was just going to elaborate that the reason being, it's Thanksgiving week and it seems prudent to move that meeting date a week out.
Yep.
Stein, yes?
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Brashio, yes.
All right, good. Thanks, Karina. Anything else? I'm forgetting.
No, I have a couple of things for the Planner's Report.
Okay.
Just really quickly. We received some question and correspondence regarding 40R information, just preliminary to consider that maybe in the future.
Can I ask a quick question? Can you just remind me what a 40R is?
40R is a. 40R is.
And this is for the MBTA property that was proposed by Mark Davis at the town meeting, too, right?
Yes.
Yep.
The actual MBT prop. They, he told us they rent it out or lease it out so you can do buildings and stuff. But the 40R is similar to the 40B, but it's a mixed-use sort of thing and there is some benefit back to the town.
Thank you. 20 units an acre for residential and 20% affordable.
So are we going down the line or?
Oh, it was just a question on the Planner's Report topic of 40R, if you want to say something.
If you wanted to say something.
Well, just that, we just went through a huge zoning change in that part of town and my immediate reaction is, this is not a prudent time to be introducing another zoning overlay in an area that was just dramatically impacted by the state mandated MBTA communities overlay district. So I don't have a lot of appetite, as speaking for myself, to entertain that at this time.
And I just want to make one comment. I did volunteer to be the spokesperson for the neighborhood and the MBTA community. So I know I've been in connection, or I've been given the connection for the HOA person in the Constitution Liberty area. And then we've received emails, so I'm going to put an email response to the people around that area so they can stay up to date and current and be part of any plans that come forward because not all of them will be a butter's because of the a butter definition. But I want to make sure that they're all very well aware of the development that comes in towards us. So if you're out there and you want to contact me, feel free.
Thank you, Marnie.
I'm not sure I mentioned this at the last meeting, but the Tree City USA signs were posted on street signs. And one is on Marlboro Road heading south into town before Sears Road.
And I meant.
And the second one is on Cordova Road heading north before Woodland Road. So if you see those signs, the DPW put those up there. So that's very good. Mimi and I and Colleen attended a meeting with Chris Lund, Marguerite Landry. Someone else was there?
Al Hamilton.
Al Hamilton, to talk about the proposed zoning amendments that were brought up by Chris Lund at the Select Board meeting a week or two ago. So it was productive and we're honing in on some kind of strategies. And we've scheduled another meeting for November 4th, another meeting early November to continue the discussion on proposed zoning amendments. And I think generally it was agreed that, you know, the approach of doing one big zoning amendment for the whole code wasn't very practical. So the idea is to take little steps. And one of those, of course, is the new ADU legislation, which is mandated.
Uses an industrial park, parking were the ones discussed.
And relaxing density requirements. Those were the two things there. We'll be receiving, oh, so on October 21st Planning Board meeting, we received a request from Bill Pootree, who's working with Peter Bemis on 26 Meadow Lane, a flexible development. So the code requires that they present in general preliminary in a discussion format to the Planning Board for any feedback on a flexible development. And they'll be required to do a major site plan for the five units that they're proposing because it's not a subdivision. They have to do major, the major residential development special permit with a flexible development option, and then a LID, a special permit for LID. So they'll be presenting that information just to orient you and get feedback initially. That's that one. 2024 special town meeting, you guys know what happened. MBTA passed. CHOPSY was voted to be abolished, I believe. Sorry, Jesse. We're going to determine whether that, that particular code change requires Attorney General review to see if it's, you know, like zoning.
So like, is CHOPSY gone now or do we need to wait?
Nobody let me know.
Yeah. This is in purgatory. Yeah. There's an upcoming ZBA public hearing for 120 Turnpike Road for the parking variance for the left, for the remaining site that will be left after the 40B permit, the outcome of that. And then the 352 Turnpike Road, proposed 40B mass housing is requesting any comments. So those are due October 24th, but we have the October 21st meeting, so we can have that on the agenda if you agree, Mimi.
Yeah. So come, come prepared on the 21st with comments.
Yeah, and they had the site walk last Friday and Mimi and Jesse and I attended. And it was pretty, it was very helpful. It was a good walkthrough and good information. It was a good day so you could actually see where the building's going. A lot of questions, though, on that, so.
Yeah, I think, you know, not a bad site.
Do we want to delve into that at this time or?
No, it was just letting you know.
Marnie said absolutely not.
Okay.
Can I mention one thing on ADU? I think ADU will probably start discussing at our next meeting. And Lara was at the meeting today and she had some questions, so I suggested that the ZBA come and we start the discussion with the ZBA since they've been doing the permitting on that. And her questions were, you know, there's a by right 900 square feet or 50% of the residential building, whichever is less, are we going to have a special permit for anything over that or? So, so we agreed, start the conversation with a joint meeting with the ZBA? Okay, good.
Yeah, so we'll ask them. And also Lara was involved in the proposed zoning amendment meetings. So because it's, you know, some, for this reason exactly, they often look for amendments as well. So just a quick rundown for October 21st meeting. We have the 250 Turnpike Contractors Yard Building, major site plan. We're going to schedule Stonework Village subdivision as-built review and bond release. We have Fasenonio's review comments back. That should be in good order. They've addressed all the comments I had and I haven't looked at the follow-up review yet from Fasenonio, but I'll forward that tomorrow if you have an idea.
And Lisa and I are recused on that, so it's.
So I'll work with Jesse, so he's updated on all that information. I already talked about 26 Meadow Lane, the flex subdivision. That'll be a preliminary discussion. We have the proposed zoning amendments and the ADU legislation topic where we'll be inviting the ZBA to attend. The 352 Turnpike proposed 40B for mass housing requests for comments. And then potentially, there's an accessory apartment application with ZBA, but they're still working out some issues with the building commissioner. It is. One public hearing and one, two, three, four, five discussion, four, possibly five discussion items. Some of these will go pretty quickly and some will be, as usual, longer. And then we do have one set of minutes for this evening. We do have a second set, but we didn't put them on the list, so we'll push those to the next one.
Make a motion, the Planning Board approve the meeting minutes from August 19th, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? I didn't read them, so I will abstain.
Stein, yes?
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Brashio, yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any long, drawn-out discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Once again, great job.
Yes, thank you, Marnie.
At a town meeting, thank you for doing that.
Luttrell, yes.
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Brashio, yes.